Board to order, and the first matter of business is to elect a chairman and a vice chairman. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, we take some nominations for the position of chairman.
I'll nominate Joe. As chairman.
Second.
Any further nominations? Move that the nominations be closed?
Move that the nominations be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we can move over to the chair.
No, you gotta vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any public comment?
Before we begin, I just...
You also need a vice chair, sir.
Okay.
Vice Chair Clark.
And nominations for the vice chair?
Dave Pearson?
Second.
Second.
Any further nominations? Motion nominations be closed?
Who? I didn't hear who you said.
He just...
Oh, Alan.
Alan, I'm sorry.
Not here to defend himself.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion nominations be closed? They're done?
They're done.
Okay.
Very good.
So we have a chairman and a vice chairman.
You need to read your call to order, sir.
Okay. Before we begin, I just wanted to say that I'm on this board for a very, very long time. And I had, thank God, a number of prior opportunities to serve as the chairman, and chose not to do so because I was in the full-time practice of law. And I just didn't feel I had the time to be able to attend to the chairmanship. As of August 1st, I'm no longer practicing law. And so I'm thrilled to be able to take this position, and I'm sure we'll do fine. Okay, first of all, the town is recording this hearing. And any person in attendance who is also recording is required to notify the chair. Anybody else? We'll begin the public hearings. First matter is Deerfield Nominee Trust. William Marsh trustee is owner, seeks approval of a site plan reuse special permit with waivers for a new construction, excuse me, of a 5,845-foot SF metal structure for industrial uses. Property is located at Deerfield, Ford Deerfield Road, map 45, Prassel T-1-7, in the IL zoning district. Application is pursuant to the code of the Tana Howard, 325-51 and 55. And this matter has been continued from June 11th. Mr. Marsh, your is representative.
Mr. Chairman, just to let the applicant and the board know, if the board is to act on this this evening, it would require a unanimous vote. You are the only five members left who actually sat on all the times that this came before you.
Thank you. When you're ready.
Well, that said, my name is Bill, or William Marsh, and I am the owner of the property that's before you tonight for your consideration. At one of our prior meetings, it was decided that we should go to the Board of Appeals and seek a variance for what we were intending to do there. We did go to the Board of Appeals about two weeks ago. And we received unanimous approval for that variance. So we are now back before you for your consideration of approval of the same building, parking layout, site design, et cetera. Bill and Susan will both make the presentation. We're seeking a couple of waivers and some changes. And we're looking, frankly, to you as planning board members for some guidance on a couple of the issues. Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Deerfield Nominee Trust, with Susan Ledoux, of course. And so the reason we went to the zoning Board of Appeals had to do with a dimensional variance regarding which part of the lot was the front, required a front setback, or a side setback?
Rear setback.
A rear setback. One of those setbacks. And the building commissioner egged on by Charlene felt that the line at the rear of our building was required a rear setback. When the subdivision plan was approved by this August body, they showed a setback on what was being considered the rear property line as only 25 feet. And so we'd been assuming ever since the plan we acquired the property that that was the setback. And so that was the design that was developed. And because of the shape of the lot, if we had to meet a 50-foot setback from the northerly lot line, we were going to be required to give up a significant part of our proposed structure. And the zoning board agreed with our position that because of the shape of the lot, we had a financial hardship and that relief could be granted without derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw, or having a substantial detriment to the public good. So they were kind enough to grant it unanimously, which was greatly appreciated. So, I mean, because we've been here before, I mean, we're happy to talk all night. But I think the principal issues we have, which were highlighted by Charlene in her report, had to do with the fact that we're proposing a 5,845-square-foot building. The, we're under building coverage, we're under on lot coverage. We propose more parking spaces than are required for our proposed use. And the waivers that we're seeking deal primarily with the entrances out onto Deerfield Road. If you look at the plan upon the screen, we have a 90-foot opening that, you know, you're only allowed to have a 50-foot opening.
Max.
Maximum. And Charlene's report explains why she thinks that opening is too large. We disagree with the conclusion that she reaches, namely that we want a wide opening like that because our building is too large, and we're going to use Deerfield Road for maneuvering for the trucks that would be using, entering the site. We don't think that's accurate, with all due respect to Charlene. We think we have plenty of maneuvering room, you know, within the confines of the lot. But again, we'd like to get a little feedback from you. We have some ideas as to how we can divide that opening to reduce the width, if you think it's really important that we reduce the width. We don't, we don't think this is going to be utilized routinely by 45-foot tractor trailers, and it'd be more likely, commercial guys, landscapers, carpenters, plumbers, electricians and the like, who would be renting these bays or buying these bays. And so they'll be receiving delivered materials more likely from a, you know, a straight body box truck, or something of that nature. And we just don't think that the, you know, the maneuvering, using the Deerfield Road as a maneuvering area is going to be important to us or them. So we really want you to consider, I'd like you to consider this a waiver for the maximum width on the road. Now, one of Charlene's other concerns had to do with, we have four spaces. And if you look at the plan on the far right-hand side, we have four spaces that back out onto Deerfield Road. We thought that was reasonable because Deerfield Road is not ever going to be a major thoroughfare. And the site distances are wide open. So we didn't think that requesting a waiver so the spaces could back out onto Deerfield Road was, again, too much to ask for. It provides, you know, under our proposed use, we're required to have six parking spaces. Adding those four gives us 11, so we have more parking spaces as required by the bylaw for our proposed use. I know, so that the, we think that it's a reasonable waiver request. We look to you for guidance on that aspect, considering Charlene's concerns about it. A lot of waivers, that's it for waivers, right?
15-foot setback.
Okay. Our parking spaces are 15 feet from the sideline. If you look over on the far left-hand side of the plan, you see the closest corner there, in the southwest corner, is five feet from our property line. It's substantially more than that to the asphalt surface of the road. You have a 15-foot setback requirement from the property line. Yeah, we think the waiver is reasonable because the paved surface is a substantial distance away. I can't say that we make 15 feet from the paved surface, but it's very close. And again, so we think a waiver from that is reasonable. But of course, we look to you for our guidance.
Loading spaces.
I want you to mention that then.
Okay. If I can just go through letter E of Charlene's report. If you have that in front of you, page three. Building of greater than 5,000 square feet requires a minimum of one area for loading and unloading. This has not been provided, and no waiver has been requested. We just feel with what we have, as far as what we're proposing is for use and the number of spaces, we'd like to request a waiver of this requirement. And also, I'm going to letter F. It appears that a waiver from the exterior dumpster will need to be requested as we'll store refuse within the building. We eliminated the dumpster from the earlier site plan to accommodate the handicap, required handicap space on the site. So we'll add that to our waiver request. Parking is shown in front of bay doors. How will this not impede access? I'm not sure if this is disallowed. I think maybe it was just a question more than anything on your part, Charlene. And I just, I think we discussed this, and we didn't think that this would be an issue if someone needed to get in and out of a bay, they could easily move a vehicle. I don't think that would, I think that's what...
That's what we thought. Are we going to move a vehicle to get access? And it happened to be a car parked there, big deal.
But again, because of the use we anticipate, which is small businesses, tradesmen, you know, people who need to put stuff away, there's all kinds of stuff. Nobody's got enough room for their stuff. So we assume that some of these, particularly the 12-foot doors on the right-hand side of the building, are liable to be rented by just homeowners who have too much stuff.
For storage.
For storage.
And then just letter H in Charlene's, we had requested a waiver for the two curb cuts, and she noted that it's not necessary. So I believe we'll just withdraw that waiver request.
Unless you do the split, in which case you'll need it, because then you'll have three.
Well, that's discussion.
Right.
Point for discussion. Otherwise, the variance was granted that was required.
Okay, members of the board, anybody else have any questions of the applicant?
Do you want my report first?
We'll get back to you.
All right.
So my first question, if I may?
Sure.
Goes back to the last comment that Charlene made, that two curb cuts aren't necessary. And then you said, I missed what you said. You said unless.
If you have, two curb cuts are permissible. However, if they do an island to break up the 93-foot entrance, then there would be potential of three curb cuts.
Understood, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Through you. The 11 parking spots are requested, but six are what's required?
That's correct.
What's the reason for the additional five?
Well, we always think that having extra parking spots is better than not having extra parking spots. It's really, I mean, it's just, you know, you're trying to anticipate, you know, the use of the building. And, you know, Bill is always so bashful, he never thinks he's going to be successful. But, so, we just felt it was better to have extra than not. I think the, again, because of what we see as the nature of some of the use, it's better to have extra. I would also say that despite having extra parking spaces, we're still under on the coverage. So that, anyway, that was our thought about this.
I guess I would ask that desire versus requirement for 11 versus six, given the fact that we know from previous meetings and Charlene's report that there is an issue or concern about the four that back out onto Deerfield. And I think at one of the last meetings, there was conversation about maybe you really didn't need it. You could possibly get rid of those four, so that issue goes away. I don't know if that's changed, or if I made that up.
No, you didn't make it up. And we're more than willing to abandon those four spaces if that's a concern in the direction from the board, with the idea that once the building's built and it's occupied, and if we felt that we needed, if we were pushing, getting pushed on parking, what we talked about was coming back to see you.
Anybody else on the board? Go ahead.
Me?
Yes, sorry.
The initial use of the building for the initial tenants or occupants may not require maneuvering on Deerfield Road. How are we to know what might be the case 10, 15 years from now? I'm really quite concerned about the fact that we've got more building on this lot than the lot really can accommodate. It's, I agree, it's an odd-shaped lot, and that's a detriment. But that was the case before you bought it. I'm really concerned that we're trying to cram too much on this lot with the parking. There are just too many little concerns that I have. The maneuvering space, the four spaces that you back out onto the road with, the parking space in front of the bay. It just seems that we're trying to cram too much, you know, a size 12-foot in a size six shoe.
Yeah, we're way under on coverage and over on green space, all of those considerations.
Those are not my concerns. I stated my concerns.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
As I look at it?
Get right back to you.
I was wondering if you might consider getting rid of one parking space that goes onto Deerfield, and one over here at the Depot Road. And that will give you, closer to your setback than you need. So you're going to eliminate two parking spots and end up some of the parking that you want.
Yes, I'll give up this one, and give up that one.
We would, we're ready to do pretty much whatever you require to gain approval.
The other thing is maybe shrink down that 90 feet to some number. Or put an island in, and eliminate the parking altogether.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, oh, Mary.
Hang on, Mary.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, Charlene. Has the town engineer had a full opportunity to review the plans? Has he given full comments?
In my staff report, I have discussed this with him, and he shares many of my concerns.
Okay. So, my other point is, I still have a concern about the parking spaces. I feel like I sound like I work on record. I said it the last time you were here, I said it last year ago, when you first came in. Thank you. It was a while ago, as I recall. I personally am not a fan of the parking spaces backing out onto Deerfield Road. You know, it used to be that there were two businesses there, and now there are going to be four businesses there, and it's a tough corner and a tough lot. And, you know, landscaping trucks might not be 18-wheelers, but they still don't stop as fast as a car does. So that's still a concern for me. I share my colleagues' concerns about the openings as well. But, you know, I don't know that I have enough information to vote today myself, but...
Anybody else on the board?
A follow-up on the four lots backing out. I think, if I remember correctly, and also at one of the previous meetings, there was discussion about the possibility of, I think, stacking parking? So that...
Those talked about.
The four spaces wouldn't back out, but you would have, I don't know if stacked is the right terminology, but one behind the other. And it would seem to me, well, that's not optimum, but it doesn't, in my mind, present any greater of a problem than parking in front of a bay door. And if somebody needs to get in the bay door, you're going to move the car. So if you've stacked parking to accomplish your four without backing out, same thing. If somebody needs to move the last car in? That's a very strong concern for me, is the backing out onto the road.
Just a question. The four spots there that we're, seem to be talking about, do you still comply if you remove those four?
Yes.
Right.
I thought that you did, but I...
We have, we would then have one more than is...
Than the bylaw requires?
Yes.
Okay. Charlene?
Thank you. In listening to Attorney Riley's comments, he mentioned contractors and tradesmen might be using this building. That's a different parking requirement than light industry and manufacturing that they are basing their parking on. So that's just a new comment that just came up.
Can you tell us what that is?
I don't have my bylaw in front of me, I'm sorry.
All right.
So, going back, the Health Department, I read those comments previously, so I'm not going to read those again. Town engineer was not on staff when this application was filed, and therefore did not have the opportunity to review the application and plans. I've discussed this proposal with him, and he shares many of my concerns, as noted below. B. The driveway and curb cuts far exceed that allowable under section 325-42. When this was before the planning board for an informal review, I raised concern at that time regarding the width of the curb cut for the main parking area. I'm not going to reread what the bylaw says, but it goes on to say, "Should a driveway for a multifamily, commercial, and industrial use require a width in excess of 50 feet? Justification for this increase in width shall be provided to the planning board for review." "The town engineer and I have concerns about the width of this entrance, and do not support this waiver request. The maneuvering is required to be located within the site. However, with a large curb cut, it appears that the road is being used for circulation and maneuvering." And I remind you, this is my concern, as well as that shared by the town engineer. Item C, there are four parking spaces which back directly onto Deerfield Road. Subparagraph L requires a 15-foot setback for parking. The board will need to expressly authorize approval of these spaces. These four spaces also have a curb cut greater than 24 feet in width. The town engineer and I are concerned with the width in that parking in this area should not be allowed to back onto an industrial road, and we do not support this waiver request. I'm unaware of any industrial zone applications receiving a request that we could find. Just to show a little bit of history. Additionally, the remaining parking spaces also do not meet the 50-foot setback. The board would need to expressly authorize approval of these spaces. Frankly, I don't have a problem with them not being able to meet the 15-foot setback on any of the other parking spaces. I think there's enough buffer area between what's available in the road right-of-way for both Depot as well as Deerfield, but I cannot support the four backing onto Deerfield Road. Items E and F, the loading requirements and the dumpster waiver, as was mentioned by Susan, they will be adding that to their waiver request. G, parking is shown in front of the bays. Again, you know, how will this impede access to the bays? H, the waiver requested for the two curb cuts at this point may not be necessary, depending upon how they are going to choose to rectify the width. Again, the parking calculations are based solely on light industry and manufacturing, and three employees. Only six parking spaces are required, however, 11 are provided on the site. It is not clear why the additional five spaces are needed. If there are company-owned vehicles to be parked on the premises, or other vehicles, if this is going to be used by tradesmen or contractors to store equipment, that's another horse of a different color. So additional space may be needed, however, that needs to be shown and requested. Any other use, other than light industry or manufacturing, would have to come back to this board for further review and other department review for determination as to whether the parking or other features are appropriate for the proposed use. K, there is no question that this is an odd-shaped lot. The need for relief to allow for parking closer to the road, front setback, and the need for a variance from the rear lot line is a testament to this. Additionally, as noted previously, the need for excessively large curb cut is needed for maneuverability. That was not a term I had used originally, it was that provided by the applicant. For safety reason, there appears to be too much building and parking for this lot to support. Granted, it meets lot coverage and all those kind of things, but sometimes stuff just doesn't fit. For safety reason, there appears to be too much building. The town engineer and I are very concerned with the large curb cut opening and parking backing onto Deerfield. At this time, I cannot recommend the board take final action on this application. There has not been adequate discussion on the various waivers requested, and not requested, by the applicant to draft findings of fact expressly authorized approval for me to draft any language for the board. I just, I have nothing to base findings of fact, or, you know, a decision consistent with... Action should, I believe that action should not be taken until these items are discussed or a better plan is proposed. A continuance to a date and time certain, or withdrawal without prejudice. With a waiver, a future filing fee, provided the new application is made within one year, is recommended. The variance that they received is good for two years under the zoning bylaw. They have time. I'm not a huge proponent of a board trying to design a plan for an applicant. It just, it does not work well. There can be misunderstandings, miscommunication. So, that is my report.
Anything further from the applicant?
Yes, I think the, we agree that the board should not be trying to design our project, and we would not expect you to. We, you know, we were seeking guidance on the issues that were of concern to Charlene and the board members. I think the, I have to tell you, for the life of me, I can't understand the concern with the 90-foot curb cut. I don't know what the advantage is either to the town or to the property owner if we put some sort of island and split it up. But, I mean, if that's, if that's a goal that the planning board would like us to achieve, then... would like us to achieve, then we can work on that design.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard in this matter? Seeing none. I don't think I see any. Move to continue?
Well, I'll ask...
I think they need some guidance as to what, I mean, what I'm hearing from at least two of you is that the four, or at least three of you, is that the four parking spaces backing out are not desirable?
These are folks, this isn't their first rodeo before this board, so I'm sure, I assume that they heard all that. And we'll address it accordingly for the next time that we, that the matter comes before us.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I would ask the applicant, what's their pleasure? Keeping in mind that there are only five of us left that can act on it. So, is a continuance helpful? What date could you come back?
Well, we'd really like some guidance. I'm not asking you to design the project at all, but we can very easily come back with a plan that shows an island in that 90-foot distance, if that's what the brothers from this board are. And it means drafting a new plan with our engineer and new calculations. We're more than happy to do it. We don't want to do it if, in fact, it's still...
It's not going to work.
Well, I think...
I'm not saying it's not going to. I'm saying, you don't want to do it, but it's not going to work.
Right.
And that's, you're looking for some direction.
Right. I think I heard Charlene clearly, and I think you may be in agreement with her thoughts about the less than the 15-foot setback distance on the corner that Bill Park pointed out earlier. And we're more, and to reiterate, we're happy to come back with a plan that abandons those four spaces.
Okay.
So, if that's, if that's what, if that's something that could be voted on in the affirmative, then we'll be happy to go back and make those changes and come back and see you.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything else. David was saying, basically, he thinks the building's too big for the site. Yeah, and I heard him, I heard David very clearly. Yet, we're way under on your bylaw requirements on site coverage.
Okay. Dave first?
Not so much that the building's too big. The building takes up the space that's needed for circulation and parking, if you want, if you need 11 parking spaces. I'm concerned about down the road, not about what your intent is, but down the road, having no curb cut for that length of time, it's almost an invitation for the people that are occupying this down the road to use Deerfield Road as a circulation avenue. So that's my concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Creating danger.
So, my comment is all, if Charlene and the town engineer are telling us that they want less than 90 feet and to have the, to have an island or to have that meet zoning and not be a waiver, I'm inclined to rely on the town professionals, because they're good at what they do. And we're volunteers that do it. So, I'm inclined to listen to them on that matter. I think we've been consistent in the backing out onto Deerfield. I can't say that again. So, you know, I'm honest with that.
We're not very smart, but we're not that dumb either.
I know, I realize that. So, you know, I guess from my perspective, I personally am not willing to vote on these waivers and this plan tonight. So, my question would be, what would you need for a timeframe to come back with revisions?
Two weeks. Well, I don't know when your next meeting is.
So that's my...
Well, you need to submit it. We need to be able to review them. So, you meet on the 27th and again on September 10th is the meeting after that.
I just have a question. I received a letter from Mr. Riley to Carl's Boatyard.
Well, he, well...
Can you explain that?
Yeah, I will.
It's now become a part of the record, so I've got to...
Well, the reason for the letter is that while we're with the zoning board, the chairman of the zoning board pointed out that this property is one of the gateways into Harwich, one we all use, because that's the fastest way in. And the, and what I saw, that portion of the property is its closest to Great Western Road. And so, we made a commitment to him that we would put the hammer down on Carl and have him get that stuff out of there.
Is, can I just ask you? Are you the owner of the entire parcel all the way up to the road?
Yes.
Where Carl's boats are and so forth?
Right.
So this is just a development of a portion of the lot?
Right. We also own on the other side of Deerfield, so...
Show us where?
It doesn't show up there.
I see. Okay.
As well.
You don't own right next door, though. That's somebody else owns.
That's Farrell.
Yeah, Alan's across the street. We don't own that. And we don't own Clodea. Those lots were sold.
I can't let it go without commenting on the fact that somebody should have said something to the lumberyard about the entrance to the town of Harwich when they put that, you know, enough enough.
I did, I do have a zoning bylaw, Mr. Chairman, regarding parking, if you would like me to...
Sure.
So, other industrial, it's 1.3 employees on the, per, 1.3 per employee in the maximum shift plus one per 200 square feet of office space. Additionally, parking owned vehicles, parking, I can't talk tonight, parking company-owned vehicles. In addition to the requirements outlined above, one space will be required for each company-owned vehicle kept on the premises, including trailers and heavy machinery. Space provided must be of adequate size to accommodate the equipment utilized in this space, so...
We assume a lot of those will be stored inside, though.
We really think the building is going to be used for storage. We don't know. We haven't finished building the building, and we haven't entertained prospective tenants, any of that. But we designed the building to accommodate storage, which we think, I think, there's going to be very, very little demand on parking.
Okay. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, that begs the question for me, what kind of storage? And to Charlene, are there different requirements for different storage types?
Well, Marina and boat use storage has a different type. We actually don't have a parking requirement for storage facilities. It could be warehousing or wholesale trade, not the wholesale, but warehousing, which is one per an employee, maximum shift, plus one per 1,000 square feet of floor area.
Mary, I can tell you that we've developed a couple of different industrial building sites in Chatham in an industrial park. And they were designed and built for storage. And the users of those bays that we have either sold or rented have been for boat storage, larger boats, like 40-foot boats. There's another guy that...
Not, not commercial.
No, just storage. And in fact...
Personal boat storage.
In fact, we nicknamed the, we had come up with a name for the condominium that was, that owned the place. And we called it Big Boy's Boat, what do we call it?
Toy Box.
Big Boy's Toy Box.
And that's what happened. And it was like, there's a guy that's got 10 antique cars that he refurbishes and takes to shows. And these people are hardly ever there. And it's just a very low, intense use of the building. And I think that's the way this is going to go.
If I might, I just want to make sure I understand. I'm looking at the blow-up photo. Those boats that apparently Carl has there, they're on your lot?
Correct.
They paying rent?
Well, here's the problem. Carl is a sailor, we're sailors.
So am I.
Yeah, I know you are. And so Carl and Bill, you know, they actually own a boat together. And so, there's a long-term friendship. And so, the, Bill has previously asked them to move things, and they go away for a while. But because of our commitment to the zoning board, we felt it was more important to change the tone of our request, something a little sterner than, gee, Carl, please move your stuff.
I understand. There's a history to that, too, which we don't need to get into here. But there's a history there of his storage and his problems there with prior owners and so forth. But it's not part of this hearing. Okay. Anybody else on the board? Is there anybody in the public which make any comment? Seeing none?
Well, we want to pick a date.
I am, let's...
I would recommend the 9th to give staff adequate time to give you...
You mean the 10th?
September 10th.
Yeah.
And that's what, a Thursday? Is that a Thursday?
No, that's not until October.
Yeah, besides, the 27th is too close to Labor Day weekend. We're just getting ready by then for Labor Day, right?
You can come, but you need to get me plans like tomorrow, which...
Oh, I'm joking. I'm joking.
We would love to come on the 10th.
Somebody prepared to make a motion?
I won't, I wouldn't be here on the 27th, so...
Oh, we, yeah, is everybody going to be here on the 10th?
I need to make sure that I'm going to be here on the 10th. So, if I can have 30 seconds, I can find out.
Yeah, because that's critical, because if you don't, you...
Need everybody.
Yeah, I just need to double-check.
I mean, we do have a new board member, and our other member who's absent this evening will be here in the future, so...
But they can't sit.
If you want to withdraw without prejudice and just reapply, have seven board members. It's not a bad thing.
Well, we don't mind doing that, Charlene, as long as we can come back on the 10th.
What would be the reason for them to withdraw?
Better vote, better chance of vote.
You'll have seven members.
Oh, so, oh, we'd start over with, I understand.
The only ones that can vote.
At that time, the five people who are here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Give me, give me 30 seconds.
Oh, she's still looking. Please give us a second.
No, that's a significant advantage. That's a significant advantage.
Charlene, can we, can we, can we reapply in time for the September 10th meeting?
The deadline for that was last week.
So I'm okay on the 10th. The 6th was a date that I couldn't...
Otherwise, it would be the 27th.
Well, let me ask you this about that...
Because we need to re-advertise, so we have, you know, our posting and, you know...
So, has the ad gone in?
It has not.
Okay, so, couldn't you just insert us in the ad?
No, not until there's an application.
But, but didn't Bill just say he couldn't make the 27th?
Of September.
Of September.
No, I'm sorry.
Of August.
August.
And I can't make the 27th of September.
Okay, so I can make the 10th of September.
I may have an issue for the 10th. I won't find out for a day or two.
So, Charlene, if we, if we give you a new application tomorrow morning, can you put the ad in for us?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
We would have the time to do that.
All right, great.
So what's your position?
Withdraw without prejudice and ask for a waiver of the filing fee?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to withdraw without prejudice and a waiver of the filing fee.
So long as it's, so long as it's, the application is made within 12 months.
Long as the...
Actually, there is a draft motion for a withdrawal without prejudice on the back page.
Isn't that lovely? So...
Somebody want to make that motion?
Yes, I'm moved to continue the hearing.
No, no, close the public hearing. And allow for...
Moved to close the public hearing and allow for withdrawal without prejudice of PB 2019-15 for Deerfield Nominee Trust and to allow for a waiver of the filing fee for future application by the applicant for this property, provided such application is made within 365 days.
Second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
See you on the water.
Thank you very much.
See you within a year.
I hope.
In two weeks.
Hey. I show the next matter to Edson Eldridge. Are you Mr. Eldridge?
He's Mr. McElwee.
Oh, I know who he is. Okay.
Doing my best here.
Yeah, motion open the public hearing?
You can just open it, sir, as chair.
Okay, the public hearing's open.
Good evening, John McElwee.
Just getting comfortable on this chair.
I know you are.
Coastal Engineering. Do you have more patty? We have a, we're here on a continued hearing for Edson Eldridge for a two-lot subdivision that we presented on July 9th. It's a two-lot subdivision, and under the zoning bylaw, under Section 325-18-Q, one of the lots is going to be a panhandle lot. We've already gone through and explained the parcel itself and the lots. I don't want to go through that again. The plan was, the hearing was continued until this meeting. We do, we have, we did not provide any additional information. We weren't asked to do so. We do have three, we consider reasonable waiver requests before the board. And another item to bring, that I wanted to bring up is, there was a Board of Health hearing, and we need to put some notes on the plan. Also, we have some bounds that we installed on the site, and we need to revise the plan to show that the bounds have been set instead of to be set. We also have to revise one of the names of the abutting roads on the plan. And if the plan is approved, we will provide that information and make the plan complete.
You have not made the changes to the plan yet?
No.
You're just telling us what you're going to do?
What we will do if the plan's approved.
Okay.
These were things that were brought up originally in the original hearing.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify what we would do in order to try and help move things along.
I don't know anybody else, but I took a ride down to see where this was. I had difficulty, but I finally figured out which were the two lots and so forth. Okay, anybody on the board, questions?
Could I ask for Charlene's report first?
Sure. Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Also, I should have said this before. In order for the definitive subdivision to be approved, it will require four affirmative votes. Because for a subdivision, it's only a simple majority, whereas a special permit is a supermajority or two-thirds. So it would require four board members voting in the affirmative.
And are all of us eligible?
I'm sorry?
Are all of us eligible?
Yes. You are all eligible. I'm not going to run through the department, the other department comments again, unless you want me to. As Mr. McElwee explained, the Board of Health conditions and restrictions would have to be added to the plan. My comments, and these are just reiterated from the last meeting. There has been some question as to the ownership of this property. However, it is not the planning board's jurisdiction to question ownership. A deed and plan have been provided, and the owner, applicant owner has signed the application and the surveyor has stamped the subdivision plan. As you may recall, very similar situation two weeks ago with the Freeman Ellis subdivision. Two, Board of Health notes will need to be added to the plan. Three, the request is also for a panhandle to serve as frontage and access for Lot 2. The first, for, the first request is reasonable as this is a panhandle lot and there's no roadway to be constructed. That was the first request for a waiver. The second request for a waiver for no covenant is also reasonable in that the concrete bounds have been set, prior endorsement of the plan. The plan would have to be updated to show where the bounds have been placed. The request for topography, I can't support it. It's just the planner in me. But that's entirely up to the board whether to require topography or not. I do believe...
Topography on the plan?
Topography on the plan.
Thank you.
I do believe that the board can, you know, approve the plan contingent upon first receiving a topography plan. The topography plan will have no bearing on whether or not you take action on this. Where it is helpful at a town level is if the building commissioner needs to see an existing topography plan to make sure that nobody has filled a lot, because it has to be at its natural grade. That's really the only reason, you know, why there would be any concern on a staff level regarding this.
And Charlene?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The topography would just show the elevation?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Records should reflect also that the Engineering Department told us that all site drainage shall be controlled, contained, and infiltrated on site. And the Fire Department informed us that they will require adequate housing numbering, house numbering...
Yep.
At the road. I think you've commented on the public health.
Yes, yeah. I had our, I had read the engineering and fire into the report previously.
I thought you had, okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, members of the pl- planning board, anybody have any comments or questions?
I do not.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I do not.
Go for me.
Okay, uh, what's your, what's your pleasure then?
Uh, you do a public here.
Sorry, anybody in the public wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Please identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Nina Schessler. I live at 1040 Queen Anne Road. And I'm very concerned about the access, this panhandle lot. First of all, it's right on the, coming off the hill on Queen Anne, on the curve. Cars fly by there. It's a very dangerous part of Queen Anne Road. And I think you ought to really look at that when considering this panhandle. Another thing I wanna mention is about 30 years ago, I applied for panhandle with this board. At, I have an acre and a quarter on my lot, and I was told that I didn't have enough frontage to have a panhandle lot, so I don't know what's changed. But to me, to put, you know, first of all, you have to think about cars going by, um, access for the fire department, for the police department. This is, this is not simply a little driveway. This is basically access to a back lot. And it's a very dangerous part of Queen Anne Road. And, and it's right at the bottom of a hill, on a curve. So I think that, I don't think that's been considered in, in this application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out, um, fire, police, and highway all reviewed this. And with the exception of noting that a house number needs to be at the road, they had no other concerns.
I understand.
So they did review it, the plan.
Okay. Anybody else in the public wishes to be heard? Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Krahcht, K-R-A-C-H-T, 1032 Queen Anne Road, the easterly abutter to the proposed subdivision. I'm requesting that the planning board consider the safety of the proposed driveway location. Just earlier this year, a Chatham police cruiser was in an accident with an oncoming car at this spot. I arrived at my home the next day to find car parts in front of my west side yard and buy this proposed driveway. Every weekday during the school year, a yellow school bus stops to pick up and drop off children at Partridge Path, which, which is directly across the street from this proposed driveway. My neighbor across the street, an old Queen Anne Road in Chatham, has been working on speed limit enforcement in this area where there are many speeding cars and trucks. The proposed driveway is in a very dangerous location at the bottom of a hill and on a curve. There is a utility pole with a transformer and no street light, so any accident into this pole would affect the entire neighborhood. Furthermore, there is already an existing curb cut and driveway into the lot known as 1028 Queen Anne Road per the Harwich tax map. This driveway is up the slope and to the west. I come from an area near New York City where there's been poor planning and overdevelopment. I would ask that you consider the vegetation and wildlife that would be displaced. I was attracted to Harwich because of all the trees and open space. I request that you delay any vote on this matter until you do a complete study of this area. Thank you very much.
Before you leave us...
Yes.
Is your property the one, as we're looking at the plan, to the right?
To the right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And you own all the way back, in other words, you'd have butted in the back?
Um, my neighbors Lori and Phil, I'm gonna speak on their behalf later, if I may. They're the ones that are behind me on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishes to be heard? Please?
Hi, my name is Dave Hood. I live at 1016 Queen Anne Road. I have no concerns with Mr. Eldridge. He's a well-respected local businessman who's done a lot of goodwill. He jumped upon this property with bottom dollar, um, to buy two and a half acres for $250,000, which was a great, that's a great business opportunity. My concern is only with the previous owners and the surveyors who have overtaken the plot, the lot that was next to this, that was unknown owner. And all of a sudden, like we discussed last time, the frontage went from 110 to 200 overnight with a surveyor's rule or whatever. I just, I think it really stinks that they were able to just take this property and now there's gonna be a house back there, which affects all of the abutters significantly. Like I say, that's only my concern. That's, I, Mr. Eldridge is like a well-respected businessman, like I say, he's done many goodwill things in town. I have no problems with him, but just the way that this land was acquired in cahoots with the previous owner and the surveyor, and I just, I don't, I don't know how this can go forward. That's all.
David, don't leave.
Sure.
I want the record to reflect that, uh, the current witness is a client of mine and therefore I cannot sign, I cannot vote on this matter.
You need to recuse yourself, Joe.
I'm doing that. Meant to.
Yep.
I'd be good going before I could open my mouth, so I, I, I'd like to recuse myself. We need, we don't need to vote for that, do we?
No.
Oh, it's okay.
Right.
Sorry. I would've done it earlier.
If you're recusing, you need to remove yourself.
Oh, okay, I'll remove myself.
You have to go sit in the audience now.
Sorry, Joe.
Didn't mean to make you get up.
And you don't have a chair, a vice chair, so... Present, so somebody needs to...
I'm happy to sit in if somebody, if everyone's okay with it.
Aye. Very okay. I don't think you have to move.
She wants the chair.
No, I'm just taking that, that mic.
So now it does need to be unanimous vote.
Okay. So, anybody else in the audience? Again, could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Cheryl Doran. I live at 36 Old Heritage Way. And I just wanna say that when I bought my home 17 years ago, I was told that no one could ever build behind me as the Lot 1028 was listed as unknown owners. That was the main reason I bought my house, because I would always have peace and quiet. I have enjoyed walking the paths behind my home for years. Five years ago, I put an addition on my home when I retired after 50 years of working, so that I could rent a private bedroom suite through Airbnb. I have been really successful at building up my business with many returned guests. All my guests love the peace and quiet in my extensive backyard gardens. I am really concerned that I will lose this business if this plan is approved because of the loss of privacy. Without that income, I would no longer be able to stay in my home. I would like to request that a large buffer remain between the properties, preserving all the mature trees, and also that the plan be changed to reflect that. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of Lori Gillespie Lee and Phil Lee of 44 Old Heritage Way. Due to Lori's hospitalization last week, we're asking Jeff Krahcht to read this for us. When we moved to Queen, um, when we moved to this house, we were told the Lot 1028 Queen Anne was owner unknown and could not be sold. Besides the questions of title, we are concerned about the loss of privacy to our property with the requested subdivision. The size of the subdivision would allow a large house with a panhandle driveway right up alongside our backyard. The peace and serenity of our yard has been a pleasure, and we do not want to lose that. If approved, we request a good buffer to help us maintain our privacy and serenity. Can the current plan be revised or altered to reduce the impact to our property? We ask that the planning board delay any vote until all options are considered. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
So, question from...
Yeah, I have a question. Is the, where is the access to their lot off of Heritage Way?
Yeah, they're on 44, behind mine. They're up there by the cul-de-sac, next to Cheryl.
And where's the access to your property?
Mine is from Queen Anne Road, uh, to the east of 1022.
So hearing, anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard? So hearing that, I'll turn it back to, uh, Mr. Krahlt if you wanted to address any of the comments.
You have any comments, Josh? No, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm familiar with, um, many of the speakers, um, this evening and, um, understand where they're coming from. However, um, the problem is, um, when, first of all, the, the panhandle bylaw is fairly new in the last, I would say, seven or eight years. So the, the, the regulations change, so the one speaker said that, um, she was turned down. Rules, regulations, laws change, and the town, in its wisdom, adopted the panhandle bylaw. So the petitioner is completely within his legal rights to, um, file this petition. Again, title is not a question, um, for this board. It's, as this town plan have pointed out, it's not, um, the jurisdiction of this board. If there's a title question, it can be taken to a court, but this board has a plan in front of it, a deed, the petitioner has a deed. I think that's all the board needs, uh, to proceed forward. Another speaker talked about, um, a couple of them, um, about their being, um, them being told that no one can ever build or that its owner's unknown, and I can tell you, as a conveyancer in this business, you never say never. Because things change, people, you, uh, you can find folks to sign deeds, missing interests. The land court in Boston can, um, cure titles, title insurance can insure titles against risk of somebody coming out of the woodwork. So you never say never. And unfortunately, folks get used to, all of us do, used to having, um, peace and quiet and privacy and wooded property next to us, but it's still a free country and everybody's entitled to, uh, use their property to, to, in, in the way that the law allows, so that if they're able to build a house, um, in a wooded area that was previously, uh, afforded privacy and seclusion, that's the way of the world, especially on Cape Cod. You build, uh, on lots. We can't put a door on the bridge and say, "We've got our lots and we don't, we don't want you to build a house on your lot." So the petitioner, petitioner is well within his rights here to, um, file for a panhandle and to build a house on it. And the board, as it knows, has to abide by the regulations, the rules and regulations. If the board denied this petition, it has to provide a written explanation, uh, written reason, reasons as to why the subdivision does not meet the rules and regulations or the zoning requirements. And I would submit that it meets all of, this petition meets all of the requirements. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the board?
I have a question.
Bill?
Can we request, um, that along with this plan that, can we request a green area?
You can request it, but the applicant's not obligated to do that as it's not part of the subdivision rules and regulations. If this was a cluster subdivision, that would be a little different.
Right.
But there's really no provision under the requirements.
Then my second question would be, um...
Doesn't mean you can't ask them and they might do it.
Maybe, maybe they can take that.
Can't make it a condition?
You can't make it a condition.
Can't make it, so that's something they could think about. And, uh, the other thing, uh, these lots that are adjoining this property, can we request that we see the placement of the houses that are on those other lots?
Um, that's not a requirement...
Okay.
Of the subdivision, only the ownership.
Okay.
Um, if, um, are you, are you also before the Board of Health this evening, John? Okay, they're coming up on you very shortly.
I know.
Yeah. Okay.
So, hearing, uh, any other questions from the board?
No, I, no, my question was answered by Charlene.
Yeah, I mean, did you want to ask if they're willing to do a buffer along the...
Are you willing to do a buffer along...
The north and east?
Privacy for the two lots that we're talking about?
Our client is here, so we need a moment, if we can, to, to confer with him.
So we'll take a five-minute recess. Is that enough for you?
It's more than enough, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
And John, if you need to go down, if you trust Mr. Krahlt to keep going.
[laughing] We'll reconvene after our five-minute recess. So Mr.?
McElwee.
Mr. McElwee.
I will, um, um, Mr. Eldridge has agreed to allow for, uh, a non-disturbed area around most of the property. And I'll go over here to explain it.
Um, you're gonna need to bring a microphone with you, so hold on a second. You can do this.
What we're gonna propose to the board and to the abutters is we're gonna provide a no-disturb area... no-disturb area of 10 feet along the panhandle.
John, you might want to face the other way, so the board can see.
Okay. Try it this way. We're gonna have a 10-foot strip along this side that'll allow us 25 feet on the panhandle to develop. The driveway would be a little closer to the proposed lot line here between Lot 1 and 2. Our setback requirement on the side and rear is 20 feet. Mr. Eldridge has agreed to go to 25 feet of a no, of an undisturbed area around the major portion of Lot 2, which would, you know, start here at the end of the panhandle and run up to here, across the back, and back down the side. We think this will help in trying to shield any building within the lot. It'll force whoever develops this to be a little further in. There won't be any trees cut or any disturbance within that area. That's what we are proposing.
Could make that part of the decision.
And it would be shown on the plan.
Has to be shown on the plan.
So you're comfortable with that being included as in the listed conditions on the, on the subdivision?
That's fine.
Okay.
Just would remind the board that because of the recusal by the chairman, that he stated that, Charlene stated that you needed a unanimous vote to approve.
So if I may just ask Charlene?
Yes.
Best place to put that condition, in the panhandle approval, or in the definitive subdivision?
I believe in the definitive subdivision.
Okay.
So what I've said is, condition agreed to by the applicant would be a 10-foot buffer along the east side of the panhandle and a 25-foot buffer around the remainder of the lot, with the exception of the, the joint.
Between Lot 1 and 2.
Lot line between 1 and 2.
There will have to be an adjustment at the end of the panhandle. You can't change, go from 10 feet to 25 feet and have room for the driveway perhaps.
Yeah.
As soon as the panhandle portion of the...
He gets the 10 feet.
...matter of acting.
Yep.
So if you have, it'll take...
Pro temp.
You have wider than a 10-foot driveway.
It's a good point. It's a good one. It'll taper it.
He knows he's gonna do that.
They'll need to show it on the plan, so, yeah.
So why don't we say tapered to a 25?
Tapering to a 25.
Whichever way.
Yes.
The engineer draws it.
A 25-foot buffer around the main remainder of the lot, except...
Between 1 and 2.
Between Lots 1 and 2.
Why don't we say the west, north, and east boundaries of the panhandle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
East.
And if I may, madam.
Yes, whatever I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Normally, that setback of 20 feet, the petitioner or the owner could disturb that area. So he's creating a, not just a 20, but a 25-foot no-disturb area, which is a significant distance, probably more than the length of this table here, of no-disturb buffer.
Understood, sir. Okay, are there any further questions from the board?
I have none.
And is, are there any further questions from the public?
Could you request any sort of privacy screen of evergreens on the side of the driveway? I mean, 10 feet, things have already been cut down. There's really nothing living in 10 feet right now.
So just for you to understand, he's, they're granting a no-disturb, so I'm not sure that the applicant's willing to add additional screening to that.
Okay, I'd just like it to be on the record that there's already been things cut down. There's not much in 10 feet from the end of the lot line, and there are some mature trees that will have to be still cut down to make the driveway go through.
Would you like to, to address it?
From prior conversations, the petitioner is not willing to do any planting.
Understood. Anything further? Yes.
So this, if you approve this, there's a sewer system going all the way from Queen Anne all the way back into that lot? Is, you know, how, how is this, how does that work?
Do you want me to...
Feel free.
They'll be required to hook into the town sewer.
So that's a lot, that's a long distance, in other words.
They know they have to do it.
And it could come in different ways as well. It could come in from Heritage, it could come in from Queen Anne, it could...
But they, they know they have to abide by...
They can't come in from Heritage, that's other people's lot.
Wherever the takings, wherever the takings end up happening, it's all, that's outside our purview and nothing that we can address.
I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
Because, for clarification.
I understand that.
The applicant knows that they will have to hook into town sewer when it goes, when it becomes available.
Anybody know when it's gonna become available?
I don't. They're supposed to start work next...
Next week.
Monday.
On Route 137, I think they said.
I'm not sure.
Isn't there an appeal, there's gonna be some kind of an appeal process to the cases where it's too difficult to put the sewer in.
I, I don't know. I'm...
There's a lot more to it than what he knows.
But there, there are other driveways and properties that are much further back than this. Yeah, so.
If there are any further comments, now is the time. Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion. Public hearing be closed.
Is there a second? So a motion made by Mr. Chadwick, seconded by Mr. Stoltz.
7:48.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
I'm sorry.
Any in opposition to close the public hearing?
No, I was saying, I to the, in favor.
All right, so hearing none is unanimous four to, four zero. So, the chair would entertain motions on the matter before us. I believe the proposed, or start on page three of...
Under the highlighted yellow.
The packet, under the highlighted yellow. So the, for the board's identification, we need to start with findings of fact for the panhandle approval, if it is the pleasure of the board.
I move the following findings of fact for the panhandle launch. Motion, motion to adopt and approve.
Go ahead.
Are we both reading it?
No.
No. He already seconded you, but you need to read it first.
I need to read it all, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll start again. Motion to adopt and approve the following finding of, findings of fact related to the request for panhandle lots. One, lot frontage and lot width within the panhandle portion is 35 feet wide. Two, the length of the panhandle portion is less than the maximum of 300 feet at approximately 202 feet. Three, suitable access by a driveway to such lot is provided within the panhandle and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway, or the panhandle lot meets the shape number requirements being less than or equal to 22.
Is a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made by David.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's been seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been seconded by Craig. Yep. So I have one point of order for Charlene.
Yes.
With the respect to the topographies and the waivers, is that sufficient for us to deal with that just by not voting in the waivers? Or does that need to be included in each one of these, in the panhandle approval as well?
No, the waivers are not required for the panhandle approval.
Thanks. So, that being said, all those in favor of approving the findings of fact?
For the panhandle.
For the panhandle.
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion carries for nothing. So, the next is the definitive subdivision decision. So we need to vote findings of fact or hear a motion.
Vote one number one, the findings of fact for the definitive subdivision. Motion to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for residential uses are permitted in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area, and shape. Four, border control requirements shall be met. Vote, read both of them, or?
Nope, you're, nope.
You need a second.
Is there a second?
I have a second, okay.
So David's made the motion on the findings of fact for the definitive subdivision.
And Bill seconded.
Bill Stoltz is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion carries for nothing.
Okay.
So the next matter is the vote on the waivers from subdivision rules and regulations.
I understand that. I'm reading the please note rule. Charlene?
If you're fine with the topography, then it would be all three.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to Section 400, Article 2, based on staff comments. One, Section 400-10-B Plan Profile and Cross-Section Requirements. Two, Section 400-11-D Performance Guarantee Bond or Covenant. Three, Appendix 4B Subdivision Filing and Plan Requirements, Item 37, Topography of Land.
So motion's been made by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made by Mr. Chadwick. Just a point of order for the board, so this means that the topography waiver is included, so they would not be required to file a topical plan for the subdivision.
The building commissioner just may ask for, and, you know...
I'm just...
Topo, but, and they're gonna need to do it for septic, so...
So I'm just clarifying that for the board.
Yep.
All right, so that's a motion that's on the floor. It's been made by David, seconded by Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion carries for nothing. So then, the board needs to vote on the definitive subdivision. The chair would suggest that based on the fact that we've added, that the applicant has, has agreed to add the condition for the, for the non-disturbed zone, that it would be to approve without, with conditions.
The do-not-be-disturbed condition.
Correct. So, the chair would suggest...
Would they have to be part of the motions, so it becomes part of the record?
They, they had agreed to do that.
Yes, it would be, it would be an additional condition under, under item...
Has anybody written that down, so I...
So I've got it. We will when you get there.
You'll read it when I get there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve with conditions, PB 2019-23, for Edson Eldridge as applicant, care of John D.
B, you want, you want item B, approved with conditions.
He said with conditions.
Did you?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Wow, I can't hear today either. I can't talk, I can't hear. I think I need to go home. Sorry.
You did, you were in B.
Care of John D. McElwee, Public Land Surveyor Representative, Blue Island LLC, as owner for a two-lot definitive subdivision shown on plan entitled "Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land for Edson Eldridge, 1022 Queen Anne Road, dated 5/31/2019, scale 1 inch equals 30 feet by Coastal Engineering, with waivers and a panhandle lot pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325-18-Q, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81K-GG. The property is known as 1022 Queen Anne Road, MAP 74, Parcel W-2 in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. The following conditions are imposed. These are suggested conditions."
You don't need that these are suggested.
Okay, sorry. One, the Board of Health requirements, conditions shall be added to the definitive plan prior to the endorsement of the plan. Two, waivers approved by the planning board shall be added to the definitive plan prior to the endorsement of the plan. Three, prior to endorsement, a revised plan showing all bounds shall be submitted.
And four?
And four.
The applicant has agreed to a condition that there shall be a no-disturb buffer zone of 10 feet from the east side of the panhandle, tapering to a 25-foot no-disturb buffer around the remainder of the lot along the east, north, and west property lines of Lot 2.
Is there a second? Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by David, seconded by Craig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion carries for nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's seconded? I'm sorry. Craig, thank you, Craig.
Come on back, Joe. All yours. You want it, you got it.
I don't know, maybe we should rethink this. You have more, more experienced chairing this night than Joe does.
Oh, God. My apologies to the board. That gentleman was up and speaking before I realized who it was. Okay, the next matter is, Whichmay Harbor Real Estate LLC Attorney Singer is apparently, oh, that isn't what it says, but that's who he is. Andrew Singer is apparently counsel, and I think he's...
You need to read the whole notice into the record, sir.
Okay.
So you have to read the whole paragraph and then what you deal with that.
All right. Applicant, Whichmay Harbor Real Estate LLC, applicant and owner, care of Andrew, Attorney Andrew Singer, representative seeks to amend a site plan review special permit granted in case PB 2010-26 by making improvements in the existing beach club, including replacing the existing restaurant pool equipment building, two swimming pools, the pool decking, and other site improvements with a new restaurant building, a small restroom, and retail building, a pavilion expansion, two smaller swimming pools, and a new concrete pool deck and various beach amenities. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 32555, Site Plan Review 32551, Structure Greater Than 7,500 Square Feet, and Chapter 400. Property is located in the RH3 and RL zoning district at 23 Snowwind Road, MAP 8, Parcel P212. The applicant has requested a continuous to October 22, 2019.
So I move that we continue the public hearing for PB 2019-27, Whichmay Harbor Real Estate LLC. Two, October 22, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Okay, second?
Second.
I probably will not be there on the 22th of October, at the, at the meeting.
No testimony's been taken, so it's not critical.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters continue to October 22. Finally, on our public hearing docket, PB 2019-28, Samuel Patel as applicant, care of Howard Cahoon, Representative, 711 Main Street LLC, as owners, seeks approval of a restaurant, fast food, takeout special permit pursuant to 32513, 432A of the Code of the Town of Howard, property located at 711 Main Street, MAP 41, Parcel D8 in the CB zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Howard Cahoon. With me tonight is Samuel Patel. We seek your approval of the fast food, excuse me, the takeout segment of our project, which was omitted when you were kind enough to give us initial approval for the rest of the project. We come before you today to cure that defect. We have always planned for this. The parking is adequate, the sewerage, although it has not been designed yet, we know we have to take it into consideration. We feel that it won't be a problem. And basically, that's the situation. I think, I think it'll add to the choices that the public has in Howard Center for lunch, and I think it's a good thing.
Okay, members of the board? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Did we have Charlene's comment?
Yes, please.
Which are quite brief. Board of Health, this will require food service permit application and a septic permit application, needing a fully compliant Title V, no objections to the use special permit. Planning staffs, this went through extensive site plan review process, only restaurant, fast food, takeout is before the board, and I only recommend standard conditions be imposed. I have provided you with a numerous number of findings of fact and other such sendings.
We're not asking for any special consideration or any waivers at this point, okay?
None are needed for this.
Close the public hearing?
Yeah, move to.
You gotta ask for the public.
Anybody in the public wish to be heard? Okay, move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vote to adopt the proposed findings. Can you be kind enough to read those?
Sure, I gotta find where I am. Let's see, so, I move that we adopt the following findings of fact, that, one, the property is located within the C-v zoning district and the Harwich Center overlay district. Two, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use. Four, the site went through an extensive review under site plan review, case PB 2019 dash 18. Five, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Six, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, including appropriate sewage treatment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So that was unions, right?
Yes.
So I move to approve, case number PB 2019-28, Samuel Patel as applicant, care of Howard Cahoon, representative, 711 Main Street LLC as owners, seeks approval of a restaurant, fast food dash takeout use special permit, pursuant to Section 325 dash 13, Section 4 dot 32A of the Code of the Town of Harwich, for property located at 711 Main Street, map 41, parcel D8, in the C-v zoning district, based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
Did you want to include a condition that the decision shall be recorded at the registry of deeds?
Okay, so I will include that, that as a matter of course, so I will amend my motion before it's seconded, to approve with conditions, case number PB 2019-28, Samuel Patel as applicant, care of Howard Cahoon, representative, 711 Main Street LLC as owners.
You don't have to reread it if you don't want.
I'm gonna reread it.
Okay.
Seeks approval of a restaurant, fast food, takeout use special permit pursuant to 325 dash 13, Section 4 dot 32A of the Code of the Town of Harwich, for property located at 711 Main Street, map 41, parcel D8, in the C-v zoning district, based on the aforementioned findings of fact, fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval, pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, the following condition is imposed, that the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable Registry of Deeds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say for the record that that should just be automatic? Special permit should just automatically?
It should be, however, not everybody actually does it, so unless it says it, they don't do it.
Oh, just, as a matter, I just, it was buried into my papers. We did have a written request from Mr. Singer, so that should be cut part of the, the record.
It already is.
And, you have the advisory opinions of the zoning Board of Appeals, any questions or comments? None, and move on?
None. Move to accept and place the agenda on file.
Okay, yeah, with respect to PB 2019-17, Cook, there was a request to refund the filing fee following withdrawal without prejudice. Okay, so, well, somebody wanna make that motion?
Do you wanna, do you wanna ask Charlene first, or do you wanna hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Long night. My name's David Cook, I own Cooky's Painting, I also own a house in Harwich. I wanna thank the board and everybody for spending time and listening to us. What was I, where are we going here, hang on a second. So basically, I'm requesting to get our money back, we, you know, we hired an engineer. I bought some property over here, which, we were in the middle of buying it, they gave us a set of plans. It had two bays underneath, and it had two apartments that we were gonna build in the Villa Roma parking lot. Was also gonna pave the parking lot, put lighting in there, you know, and dress up the property really nice, and I own a painting business. I'm not a builder or anything like that, but I pay rent over here, so I was gonna build this for ourselves, also for income, and then have families that could live in there. So we hired an engineer at the last minute, excuse my voice, I'm losing my voice. At the last minute, the engineer backed out, had to hire another engineer. Again, I don't, I mean, Charlene knows I was in here talking to her, and I have no idea what I was really doing, but they withdrew without prejudice. And then, you know, when I got another engineer, and I was bringing more plans in, someone mentioned to me, you know you can't put your painting business there.
That was me.
That was Charlene. And I didn't know that, this is the reason why I was doing that. When I got the plans from the realtor, it shows two apartments upstairs, two bays downstairs, I rent a bay. All of my plates on my truck say "commercial plates," so I thought I owned a commercial business, which I do. And the property was residential and commercial. Unbeknownst to me, it had to be industrial. So I didn't know it had to be industrial. So, you know, I lost money with my architect, thousands of dollars, my engineer, I had to pay. Attorney Kroll that just left, great guy, but I didn't wanna hire him to come in here for this, so I had to pay him for that. And then I gave $2,200 to the town. I never really submitted any of my plans, nothing was stamped, and I'm just asking if, you know, I think I took a big enough beating here, if I can get my money back.
I just have two questions, first of all, make sure we're clear, this is the blank lot to the right of the restaurant.
Of the Villa Roma, yes. It's been blank, and supposedly in 2004, it was all approved for these plans, that's what the realtor told me.
And you're the title holder and continue to be the title holder of it?
No, I backed out, and.
You never became the title holder.
Nope, I paid, I paid them money, I was gonna close on the property.
I understand, okay, we don't need that.
And then they said, they thought we could do it.
I just was trying to figure out if you owned it or didn't own it.
No, I understand.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I was hoping to know.
Just like Charlene's comments.
Charlene?
Yeah, so Mr. Cook did reach out to us via email, asking if we could refund the money. I indicated to him that I don't have that authority to do that, and that staff had spent quite a bit of time. I said, if you wanna ask the board, let me know, and so we got him on the agenda.
Yes, thank you.
As stated in my response to Mr. Cook, the filing fee is intended to cover staffing and other overhead costs associated with his application. This application was processed by the planning office and the planning assistant, preparing the case by preparing a referral form and packets, preparation of legal notice, plus the cost of advertising, correspondence with the applicant about notification to a butters, notification to a butters, following the withdrawal, et cetera. In addition to my review of the plan and application, and also meeting with Mr. Cook several times to go over this, the following departments also reviewed the plan, engineering, fire, police, health, highway, and conservation. Many staff hours were expended on this one application. In addition, I spent time with Mr. Cook and his representatives, reviewing revised plans and corresponded several times with him. I do believe it is very unfortunate that Mr. Cook was not able to move forward with the purchase of this property. However, in my opinion, this does not warrant a refund of the filing fee.
Okay, members of the board.
But it's entirely up to you guys.
Does, does the board have the authority to refund this? You said you didn't have the authority.
I don't, 'cause I'm not the planning board.
I understand that.
The planning board sets the fees.
Does the board have that authority?
That is an answer I can't give you, if you believe you do, you can do that. You have waived, just like you did earlier this evening, provide, and the board did waive a future filing fee for Mr. Cook, for this property. But he, it was realized that what he actually wanted to do on the property, he couldn't do. So it was good that we discovered that before he purchased it.
And, and I did send out every letter to all the abutters, which cost me, I had to do it twice, which cost me a lot of money to do that. You know, I wouldn't have done this or spent any time doing any of this if I'd have known I was just throwing away all this money. And you know, I own a small business on the Cape, I pay taxes in Harwich, I'm just asking, you know, if you give me half back, or some sort of a refund back. You know, it's 2,200 and some odd dollars, which is a lot of money.
Members of the board.
So can I ask a question? Was the vote to, was the vote tied specifically to a reapplication on that lot?
Yes.
Could, so could we instead allow him a waiver of a fee for a year on any other building application, as opposed to?
Not a building application, but certainly on a site plan.
A planning board.
A planning board site plan filing.
On another lot.
If I can just interact for a second, it would have to be industrial. And you guys working in the Town of Harwich know that there is no industrial property available in Harwich. So that wouldn't work for me, unless I wanted to buy Marcelline's lot, which is millions of dollars. There's no industrial property out there.
It's a nice piece of property.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there something that you think you could have done different, differently, to have this information come to you a lot sooner?
I think, I think it was an error on the realtor's end, when they presented me with these plans. When this property was there, and I looked at the property and said, these are the plans, this is all approved in 2004, and the engineer was part-owner of that property, I forget what the engineer's name was.
I forget his name, too.
Ed Stone, so he was part-owner of the property, he got a piece of the pie if I bought the land, so I was all ready to go, you know, and it had the plans. I spent another 3,000, just to buff up the plans, to make the property look better, and, you know, which I'm not getting that back from an architect, you know, and, I don't think, I could have done anything different, except not trusted the realtor and the owner of the property, and said, okay, you know.
Just from the staff level, we do encourage, you know, prospective applicants to come in and talk to staff beforehand. Unfortunately, somehow, that was never relayed to you through whoever your realtor was, but, you know, we would have nipped it in the bud before it even got this far, but we didn't have that opportunity.
So, do, for me to you, Mr. Chair, having been on the board the longest, of those of us sitting in the room, do you, do you recall ever refunding a filing fee, I mean?
We have, we have refunded filing fees, and we have, we have in the past done what you suggested, basically, put it in escrow if the applicant has a further matter within a year or something like that, we've done both.
'Cause I haven't, while I've been on the board, I haven't, we haven't refunded anything, so that's, my concern was, was kind of setting a precedent in that respect.
So in, in the past times when the filing fee was refunded, was the reason for it and justification similar to this case, or was, did it entail an entirely different set of circumstances?
I can't honestly say I have a specific request, but I don't think it was, this is a very unusual situation. And like most of you, I drive by this lot.
Yeah.
Probably once a day. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Do you have an estimate of how much money the town has got invested in this?
There's no way to, for me to do that, unless I really get into the math. Just for the board's information, other boards and committees on their filing fee say no refund. That may be something you guys wanna think about, not tonight, but, you know, but, I mean, there, there was substantial time spent on this application.
I, I got, as a member of the board, I got some calls with respect to it, so. Alright, anybody, anybody wanna make a motion? Apparently not. So the answer is that the, the board is not willing to refund your funds?
Well, I, I don't think that's fair, one, and the other thing is, when I did come in here, I was in here a matter of maybe 10 minutes tops, three times. So I wasn't in here for a long time, I didn't spend a lot of time with you, I was in here for brief time each time. So it's not like people spent hours and hours and hours on my project, you know, because they didn't, because if that was the case, they would have picked up on it from the very beginning. So nobody picked up on any of this, you know, and I wouldn't have gone forward with any of this, knowing that it's not commercial zoned. Well, I mean, it is commercial zoned, but knowing that my business is not a commercial business, you know, I would have never have wasted anybody's time in the beginning. I mean, I think some sort of compensation, if you've refunded in the past, maybe you can refund half, you know?
You need to talk to them, I, I have no authority.
Maybe the board can find it to refund half, you know?
I would be willing to maybe suggest that refund 25%.
Can you give me a number?
Um, $500.
Okay, I have, I have a motion to refund $500, is there any second?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Any second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
I'll go in favor.
Okay, in a four to one vote, we will refund him $500.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And that was, you're welcome. Bill, and then Mary?
Yep.
Okay, we have a Tumi definitive subdivision and covenant endorsement?
Yes.
What is that about?
That is, you all approved this back in June, June 25th, the 20-day period has expired. The applicant is now seeking endorsement of the Mylar and the covenant.
Do we need a motion, or just do it?
You have a recommended motion on your cover letter that says move to endorse this definitive subdivision plan.
So I moved to endorse the definitive subdivision plan in Planning Board Form B dash 2 agreement and covenant for PB 2019-20, Mark and Andrea Tumi.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you gotta use the special pen on this.
Well, I wasn't here for this, so do it.
You can sign, 'cause we've recorded your signature, right, I think?
You're gonna find out.
Gonna find out, yeah.
We're gonna find out.
Do it again.
Prorate it back. So that you do need to, and if you hold the pen upright, it works, if you try to do it at an angle, it won't just not.
I can't write upright.
It's not really a magic pen.
You're an architect, of course you can.
I have my own pen, but you won't let me use it.
No, no, no.
It's black, it's black.
Doesn't matter, it won't write on the Mylar, believe me.
How'd it work?
It worked fine for me.
And so two plans and the covenant, please. I bring up why I gave you a whole packet of stuff, well, you all are signing.
Sure, go ahead.
So at the Board of Select, let me sit down so we can hear me. Apparently, at the Board of Selectmen meeting last night, and I have only, this is only hearsay at this point, I have nothing in writing from them.
You gonna date this?
I'll, I'll take care of dating. There was a discussion, there was an item on the Selectmen's agenda about West Harwich and referral as a district of critical planning concern. This board was not invited to that meeting, nor was the town planner, me, so I did not go, I was not able to attend last night. Anyway, so anticipating that the Selectmen are going to be referring this, whether I get something in writing or not, I don't know.
They did vote it last night.
They did vote it last night. What I have provided for you is a packet of information regarding the Cape Cod Commission's District of Critical Planning Concern, chapter and verse from the Cape Cod Commission. District of Critical Planning Concern, chapter and verse from the Cape Cod Commission Enabling Act, as well as other information. So in your packet is Chapter E, DCPC Regulations. Two is the DCPC Guidance Documents, the DCPC Brochure, the DCPC Review Process, the DCPC Nomination Form, and I also provided to you the most recent DCPC, which again is District of Critical Planning Concern, that's why we call it DCPC, from Eastham, which was done in 2017. So I wanted you to see what some of the language was regarding a DCPC. I also, at the, one of the last meetings, we had a brief discussion about the Town of Chatham's Historic Business District Commission, HBDC, not to be confused with a DCPC. And I did provide for you copies of the special legislation that created that district, as well as their guidelines. So this will more than likely be on a future agenda. I'm not sure when. Mr. Chairman, you and I can talk offline, 'cause it...
Nothing tonight, though?
Nothing tonight. No discussion this evening. Just to give you the information, so you can be prepared to discuss.
Go ahead.
Question from Charlene. Do we have to receive, as you said, you haven't received anything in writing. Do we have to receive something from the board of selectmen in writing to say, please take this into consideration? Or whatever terminology?
I don't believe you do, however, frankly, a blanket statement to say, refer it for the board to consider DCPC without providing any guidance of what they're looking for makes your job harder, makes my job really hard. So I, I don't know if there's gonna be anything. If not, then, you know, you all can discuss it. I understand that there were a number of people from the West Howard area there last evening at the selectmen's meeting. So I'm sure that they will be watching your agendas to see when this will be brought up in discussion.
Two very, is my memory's any good? Two very active people from West Howard over the years have always stepped up.
And one is now your newest board member. Actually, we, you have a new board member. It's Duncan Berry.
Okay, I know who he is.
He was not able to be here tonight, plus he wouldn't have been able to get sworn in anyway, 'cause the paperwork wasn't done.
But he's been appointed by the board of selectmen.
He has been. He just needs to get sworn in. So just letting you know, that's somewhere out there, and...
And he's a full member, not an alternate?
Full member.
Full member.
So we need, we need the alternates.
Yeah, still need to alternate.
I believe he replaced, he took the remainder of Jim's term.
Yes.
I think that's how it was.
His term goes through the...
I think June.
June of 2020.
Any briefings and reports?
Joe, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Continuing that discussion, we didn't agenda this item. This is just an...
I'm just letting you know and providing you with information.
Right. So are we going to be putting it on the agenda for the 20th?
I will be talking to the chairman to see what is his desire to do. The chairman sets the agenda.
Okay. We'll do that, sure.
Might I suggest that, based on what Charlene just explained, that we not put it on the agenda for discussion until we do get something in writing from the board of selectmen, more than Charlene just described, please take this into consideration.
I was at the meeting last night, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I was at the meeting last night.
Yeah, I watched it.
And they were encouraged to just refer it to, to Cape Cod Commission. What the board of selectmen actually said was that they didn't wanna bypass the planning board. So they wanted to refer it to us and the town planner to actually review it and see what we thought. So that's, that's pretty much...
And that's why I've provided you with all the information. You need to read through the nomination papers. And the other thing is, if, you know, whenever it is on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be this, the board and the town would be well-served to have somebody from the Cape Cod Commission at the meeting to explain what a DCPC is, what it does, and how...
Get John back here.
You know, well, if, if he's the one, you know.
Well, he's the chair.
He's the chief regulator. He came and helped us to understand the whole DRO.
Whoever the appropriate staff member is at the Cape Cod Commission.
Whoever they send.
You wanna talk about it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any briefings and reports?
Nothing.
Quickly, I've been reappointed to the Capitol Outlay. And I think I was reappointed, I gotta go home and check.
You were reappointed to planning board as well, I believe.
Was I, was I appointed as the planning board member?
No, I think you were reappointed to the planning board, and I think, I don't know that you...
I also got some kind of a letter from...
Well, then you need to come in and see us.
Then you need to go, you need to get sworn in by before Thursday, because you have a meeting Thursday at 4 o'clock.
Okay. I know where they are. Okay, anything further?
Charlene, a question. We had talked at the last meeting about some process and procedures to go over, and we were going to agenda it for some future meeting. I didn't know, it's not specifically on here. I didn't know if it needed to be.
Again, I...
Is now that future meeting, or...
No, it's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it. That's another thing I need to talk to the chair about, when the chair wants it on the agenda. And also, we need to talk offline, 'cause honestly, I don't know what you're looking for. I don't wanna get into it now, so...
We really can't, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so who, who should I talk to? 'Cause I thought last, two weeks ago when we talked, and I gave an example of one of the things I was looking for clarification and discussion on, and have others. And I thought that, 'cause I specifically asked, do I need to make an emotion? And you said, no, it's not a vote, 'cause it's not agended, but we'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Right, and it's at the pleasure of the chairman. So it will be on a future agenda. We just need more information, 'cause I don't like having an agenda item that I'm not really sure what we're discussing. So we need, now that we...
How do I get that to you guys to make a decision to put it on the agenda?
We will talk offline about that.
You and I.
We will talk offline about that.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Thank you, folks.